the the term of Councilmember Dennis, who is no longer on the council. Before we do that, though, I need I know we need to make it official to do a roll call.
Councilmember Cambada?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. And as I mentioned, the only item on the agenda during this particular part of the meeting is filling a vacant city council seat with our appointment. Councilmember Thede, before you got here, I think Councilmember Olson and myself now both kind of explained the process to everybody.
Yeah, I know the process.
Yeah, I know. We've been through it a few times, but I just wanted to mention that. So what we'll do is I do have, and I don't know if everybody, everybody has your paperwork that you sent in, your applications and your questions and such in front of us. And I'll just kind of go, as we said, in alphabetical order. And again, you get three minutes, and you can use it. You don't have to. It's totally up to you. And so we'll just start off with the very first person, and that is Terry. Is it DeBrie? DeBry, sorry. Sorry, Terry. And yeah, you could just right, right over here to the podium.
Yeah, I think so.
To Mayor Bailey and the council, thank you for your steady compassionate leadership. You've shown us your resolve as well as your heart. In time of need, you wisely invested our future in our future generations, creating additional quality education opportunities, providing more children in our city, the opportunity to start with the tools they need to succeed and thrive throughout their lives. Our city is stronger because of your leadership and vision, and I am looking forward to continuing the good work you began at City Hall. I look forward to working with all of you to ensure Cottage Grove is realizing its full potential. And while we've made a lot of progress as to the community, that progress invites new challenges and opportunities. My family and I moved to Cottage Grove from Las Vegas, Nevada, in 2013, as I was able to secure employment at Excel Energy. In my professional career, I've had many leadership positions, starting with the IBW Local 357 as Unit Two Chairman, where I oversaw negotiations and rules for inside electricians. Executive Board Position, where I oversee all business units, contract negotiations, and all future endeavors reaching out at least 10 years. My current position at Prairie Island Nuclear Generating Plant as an Electrical Maintenance Supervisor and Department Outage Schedular. In my professional life, in my personal life, I've held position as Governor and Secretary in the Fraternal Order of Moose, and currently as Chapter President in the Christian Motorcycle Association Still Waters Chapter. My current involvement with the community, connecting with and maintaining positive relationships with residents, local businesses, facilities, institutions, and keeping up to date with local issues, including the economy and decisions made by the current city council. I feel that the next natural step is for me to become actively involved in local government. I will focus on community safety, developing opportunities for new businesses, and support our existing community businesses. I will promote responsible fiscal decision making, support our local schools, and work toward offering more opportunities for youth and senior recreational programs that promote important values such as tolerance and respect in an ever-evolving and diverse community. I will work to ensure that local government has positive effects on quality of life and limit intrusion to the residents. I will ensure that all residents has a voice and make decisions that are in the best interest of the city and its residents. Throughout my life, I've served in several leadership opportunities, community involvement activities, and I am very goal-driven. I understand how to promote long-term planning, and I have extensive experience with community involvement projects, which has prepared me for a role in local government, and feel that I am very qualified and proficient for the position of councilman for the city of Cottage Grove. In closing, I have vested, I have a vested interest in the Cottage Grove community. I have had a passion for a long time to take part in local government, and I feel at this point in my life, I have the knowledge, time, and dedication to devote this important position. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, then, on going in order is Michael Faulkner. There you go. Michael, come on up.
Hello, and thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for giving me the time to express my interest in City Council. I have lived in Cottage Grove for a little four years now. I'm married to my beautiful wife for 12 years. I have three children. I enjoy outdoors with my family, camping, hiking. We enjoy adventuring off into areas where we are visiting and also where camping. Cottage Grove has a lot to offer, from parks, walking trails, and the splash pad to enjoy throughout the summertime. I'm interested in the city council for many reasons. City has a lot to offer, from shopping to outdoor entertainment and dining out. I would like to ensure the continuation of this city, city's growth. This city is safe for all ages. I can let my kids play outside at our home and also at the local parks. Knowing that they, knowing they won't get hurt by rundown equipment and be bothered by unruly people. I'd like to ensure that the parks remain the greatest I've seen in a long time. The rural maintenance program is a nice touch to the city, low cost, and efficient to the city as well. And don't let me forget the walking trails and running trails around the city. They are maintained very well throughout the scenes here and Minnesota's weather. You all have done a great job. I would like to join the team in Cottage Grove to see you continue and for all to enjoy. Let me take the time to share my qualifications and experiences for City Council. I have worked in the Wisconsin prison system for many years in leadership role, ensuring safety to the community and inside a correctional institution, giving direction to inmates while in their housing units and performing their jobs. At St. Corrigger Correctional Institution, we operate a program called CIP. With a challenge concentration program, we lead groups of inmates in everyday activities that are structured around personal orientation and rehabilitation. They remain disciplined in military bearing and in physical activity in the community. In my current occupation and leadership, I supervise two production lines to ensure the safety of all employees and to the community, stay on track with the schedule, and working with operators and continuous improvement activities. I also am responsible for staying on budget in the division by managing overtime hours and purchasing items for the production lines. I'm also part of the Safety Committee that we meet monthly and go over agenda and open topic. So, thank you for letting me speak today. I look forward to your decision, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. The next one, then, is Monique Garza is not here. And so, council, we will, and I know the audience can see it, too. There is a video. They have the option to do video. And I just to say it, I guess you, it's one take, too. So it isn't like you get, so you have to do it, and hopefully you do it good. So here we go. So, Monique Garza.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council, esteemed members of our community. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to me today. My name is Monique Garza, and I am here to run for our city council seat and to serve this wonderful city of Cottage Grove we all call home. My journey, my experience, and passion have all led me to this pivotal moment today. I have been actively engaged in our community for several years, contributing to initiatives that aim to strengthen the bond among us. As an active board member of the Cottage Grove Chamber of Commerce since 2022, I have had the privilege of working closely with local businesses, understanding their challenges, and collaborating on initiatives that approach, that promote our local economy. One of the most rewarding experiences has been hosting Movies with Mo, a cherished community event that my family launched in the summer of 2022. This event has brought us all together under the starry skies, offering memorable movie nights for residents free of charge. The sense of togetherness and joy it brings is truly heartwarming. As a proud member of the Women Business Group right here in Cottage Grove, this platform allows me to connect with fellow motivated individuals, fostering a robust network that empowers women to achieve their aspirations. Supporting one another in our professional journeys is incredibly important to me. As a dedicated parent of a Strawberry Fest Ambassador, Little Miss Princess Josie Garza, I actively participate in numerous ambassador events. I've witnessed firsthand the impact of this program on our community, and I am committed to ensuring its continued success. It is my way of being engaged in our community and making a, the festival a truly special and memorable experience for all. My role as a realtor in our community has given me invaluable insight into our city's remarkable growth as and its evolving needs. This experience has deepened my commitment to fostering and inviting community that accommodates everyone. Furthermore, my work in quality assurance has equipped me with essential skills for critical thinking and informed decision-making. These competencies are assets I intend to bring to City Council to make a positive contribution. My desire to serve on the city council is rooted in my profound passion for our city. I am dedicated to creating an inclusive and welcoming environment for all residents. This summer, I had the honor of receiving the Hero Award from SPAR, a testament to my dedication to assisting others. I see this as a way to give back and create positive change. In conclusion, I am confident that my diverse background, community involvement, and professional experience make me a well-suited to be effective council member for our city. With your support, I believe I can make a significant impact and help our community continue to thrive. Thank you for considering my candidacy, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve our beloved city.
All right. There we go. All right. Next up is Tony Jurgens.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Tony Jurgens. I've been a Cottage Grove resident for over 30 years. My wife Dawn and I have two married daughters and two grandkids. I'm an insurance agent with Insurance Works Agency, and I have a bachelor's degree in business administration from Southwest Minnesota State. I'm asking you to appoint me to the city council. The person you appoint will serve for just one year until the next election. I think that if you appoint someone who plans to run for the seat, you're giving that person an unfair advantage over other candidates. So I offer a different approach. If appointed, I will not run for election in, to the council next year. I'll serve one year, then I'll step aside. This will create an open seat and a level playing field for all candidates who aspire to serve on this council. All candidates will have a fair and equal opportunity to present their ideas, policies, and vision to the voters. It prevents a single individual from having an advantage as an incumbent. Issues over the next year include orderly residential and responsible commercial development toward a balanced tax base to support city services. Public safety issues, including legalized cannabis and the fentanyl poisoning epidemic, will also require attention. With my experience, I can step in and be effective immediately. I know city leadership, department heads, and other city staff, and I've worked with all of you. Here's some data to support that. Most recently, I was your state representative. I served three terms in the Minnesota House of Representatives, representing the interests of Cottage Grove at the Capitol. Prior to that, I served 10 years on the Cottage Grove Economic Development Authority. I chaired the Public Works Commission and the Public Services Commission, and I was Vice Chair of the Cottage Grove Charter Commission. I was a member of the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee and the Washington County Library Board. At my church, I was on the parish council and the finance council, serving at different times as the chair and vice chair. I was on the Board of Directors at United Way of Hastings, and I'm currently on the Board of Directors at Regina Senior Living. I'm an officer with Knights of Columbus Council 1600, where I served five years as a Grand Knight, and I lead activities including Adopt a Family at Christmas Time, Food for Kids Weekend Meal Packing, and Coats for Kids Free Winter Coat Distributions. I have a passion to serve, a dedication to fostering transparency, and a willingness to work collaboratively with each of you to continue moving the city forward. I'm asking you for the opportunity to contribute in a new role. I have the experience to hit the ground running, and by selecting me, you will ensure an equal opportunity in the next election and prioritize the interests of our residents. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Tony. All right. Next is Amy Lucas.
Hi, I am Amy Lucas, and I would like to say thank you first to Mayor Bailey and to the council members and everyone else that's here tonight. When I saw that, when I saw that Mr. Dennis was stepping down, and I saw the vacancy posted for City Council, it really stood out to me. I feel like, as a lifelong resident of Cottage Grove, I've attended four different schools here: Hillside, Pine Hill, Park Junior High, and Park High School. I've stayed here, and my husband and I have chosen to build a house here and raise our four children here. I just felt like when I saw that posting, that the timing was right for me. I only have one child left in high school. He's a senior this year, and my other three are college graduates. So I really feel like now is the time that I have to get more involved in the city of Cottage Grove. I love Cottage Grove. I have a lot of energy and a lot of passion around being here in Cottage Grove, and I've been teaching at Oldman Middle School, Cottage Grove Middle School, and Park High School for 30 years now. So I have a pulse on the youth of Cottage Grove and maybe a little bit different perspective from my education background. I would say that I am incredibly hardworking, and I present a very different perspective from the previous candidate that spoke, because he was speaking about one year, coming in and just taking a spot for one year. I feel like I want to get involved for the long term, and I want to find out what more I could do for my city of Cottage Grove. Growing up here, I loved the drive-in, but the drive-in closed. I loved the roller rink, that closed. Cottage Grove has changed and grown and flourished, and I think that I want to be a part of it. I know that we have moved in the right direction with welcoming businesses, opening new parks, the splash pad, the playground that is for diverse backgrounds of people, you know, at Woodridge Park. I would like to make sure that all of those areas are safe for everyone, safe. So that would be one main concern that I have. And then another thing that I think that we have done a really great job of is housing. We have senior housing that we never had when I was growing up. So we've got White Pines, and we've got Nora Square, and both of those are offering something that we really needed. We also have a lot of beautiful new apartment buildings and townhomes, and I think that the growth is amazing. Strawberry Fest this year, I thought, was a really, really well-run, and I was so proud of our city. So I would like to really get involved and keep our city growing, and I hope that you would welcome me to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. All right. And last, but not the least, right, is Sarah Umbricht?
Umbricht.
Umbricht. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you all for taking the time tonight to hear all of us speak. As you already know, my name is Sarah Umbricht. I am originally from Newport. I grew up there. I moved to Cottage Grove in 2005 when I decided to marry my husband. He is a lifelong resident, and we decided to just stay in Cottage Grove and settle. Throughout my career in the nonprofit sector, I've had the privilege of collaborating with various nonprofits, both in Cottage Grove and the surrounding areas. Advocating for residents and community members in diverse situations, ranging from crisis situations all the way to philanthropic endeavors, has really allowed me to establish relationships and partnerships, both individually and organizationally, throughout my career. It has taught me a lot about the power of relationship building and what those relationships can mean. In my current position with the city of St. Paul as a Procedures Coordinator, I work in the Department of Safety and Inspections. I do handle complex technical project management in my role. That includes providing support and training, and it also includes identifying areas that need improvement, as well as suggesting ways to enhance processes and procedures so that they remain in compliance. I also work with department applications and offer customer support for automated information systems within the department. During my time as a Procedures Coordinator, I really had a chance to familiarize myself with the department's infrastructure, the compliance standards that it requires, procedures, and then just day-to-day operations, generally speaking. I have begun to really think about how my city council and my own community operates through the comprehension and growth that I have gained in my current position. So although I'm very new to government, I'm not new to public service. I've been in the nonprofit sector for over 20 years, and I do think the combination of those two have really helped me gain that curiosity, and I'm really excited to dive deep into the council member arena if given the opportunity. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. All right. So before, before she hands us out the ballots, to kind of get the, the process rolling, the first thing I just want to say, and I think I can probably speak for the council on this, is thank all of you. Thank every one of you for, you know, throwing your name in the hat in the ring, or name in the hat, however you want to say it. It's difficult. It's, and I say it's difficult. It's, you have to have passion, obviously, to do this role, and, and the fact that each of you saw this opportunity to get involved in your community is, is very honorable and very appreciated, appreciative of all of us. The other thing I do want to make a point is, as you all know, we have to pick one. And we have all of you out there, and you're all here to hopefully get that, get that chair. And so all but one will not. And so what I do ask, and I think these guys probably know where I'm going with this, is if it's not today for this role, to be on the council or to join us on the council, or to join us on the council, please get involved. We have numerous commissions out there. You've got to figure out which kind of commission is your passion, you know, because we do want, you know, one of the big things that we do use, we use our commissions to help us guide the future. So other than us making the final decisions, our commissions are the ones that kind of give us some ideas, maybe make us think something more than maybe what we were thinking as a collective group. And I do know for a fact that we do have, in the near future here, depending on what your passion is, we're kind of coming up to the end of the year, and usually what happens right at the end of the year is we'll have certain people that will either be term limited in some of our commissions. Matter of fact, I believe, and I can speak for myself on the EDA, I think we have one, maybe two, one for sure, I think, that will be term limited off of the Economic Development Authority. But if it's that, or parks, or Public Safety, Public Safety Health and Welfare Commission, that is something that's of a passion of yours, please get involved. Or even outside of just being part of the city piece, I heard Strawberry Fest come up quite a few times. Believe me, I know. Dave is our liaison and part of it, and I've been president. Councilmember Olson's been president of Strawberry Fest in years past, so. And we all love it, and it continues to get better and better every year. So that takes volunteers, though, so we need, we need people to do that. So with that, again, thank you all for sharing your, your vision, your passion for our community, your community. And I guess we'll start the ballot initiative here.
Councilmembers, Mayor Bailey, I will be handing out one ballot, and it will have your name on the top, and you will vote three rounds on the same ballot, just so you understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Councilmember Cambada, Monique Garza, Tony Jurgens, Sarah Umbricht. Councilmember Thede, Monique Garza, Tony Jurgens, Sarah Umbricht. Councilmember Olson, Monique Garza, Tony Jurgens, Amy Lucas. Mayor Bailey, Terry Dubre, Monique Garza, Amy Lucas.
You're going so fast, I wasn't even keeping up myself.
I'll take this briefing or mission to just compliment everyone. I think, you know, reading through everyone's credentials and questionnaire, I was really impressed with every one of the candidates that we have here today.
Totally agree. That's what makes us, this is worse than doing tough votes on the city council, to be honest with you.
I'd just like to exempli, or amplify what the mayor said, too. I, I feel it's very important in terms of people getting involved, and, and that being actually a prerequisite. I think most of all of us were on commissions and so forth before we got on council. I was on Public Works for a year and planning for five years before I actually got onto council. And so I really always kind of look at that as a kind of almost prerequisite, but, and if you really are passionate, I'd really love to see you get involved in commissions, because it really, really is important to, to us in helping us make, make the decisions that we do need to make, so.
Yeah, Councilmember Olson.
Since everybody else got their turn, figured it was important for me to say something. First of all, again, thank you all. I know I mentioned earlier, we're very grateful that you're here, and I know Monique is not here, but she's here in spirit. She's on vacation or something. But the fact that everybody took the initiative to apply is very, very impressive, and we're grateful for that. As you all heard from each individual speaking, there are lots of ways to serve our community. Dave mentioned it, Tony mentioned it, Myron mentioned it. You know, we've all served on various city commissions. I personally was on the Public Safety Health and Welfare Commission for four years. Before I ran for council, I also served on the Comprehensive Planning Commission with Dave, in fact, and Tony was on that. And I was a baseball coach for 15 years in CJA. So regardless of how this plays out tonight, what I would encourage everybody in this room to do is take the passion that prompted you to be here this evening and apply it in some way towards serving the community if you're not chosen to be the appointee at this point in time, and that is a one-year appointment, at which point the appointee would have to determine whether they wanted to run for the additional two-year term that, that Councilmember Dennis vacated or not. But whatever you choose to do, find a way to get involved if you can. It's, it's important, and our city is known for its volunteerism. It is very critical to our overall community's success. Thanks again.
Okay.
So you have one for Dubri, right?
We, we go to?
The two.
Two.
Oh, the two, okay.
Yep, in round two, councilmembers, Mayor Bailey, we're asking you to select up to two candidates this time.
Okay.
And I did cross off, so you know who to vote.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, if you want to hand it down.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say you don't have to watch them.
One more.
Yeah, we went to school for a few years. Most of you guys have PhDs, Park High School diplomas.
That's a fact, and we're proud of it.
Councilmember Cambada, Monique Garza, and Sarah Umbricht. Councilmember Thede, Tony Jurgens, Sarah Umbricht. Councilmember Olson, Monique Garza, Tony Jurgens. Mayor Bailey, Monique Garza, Amy Lucas. Councilmembers, Mayor Bailey, in round three, you're asked to select one candidate from Monique Garza, Tony Jurgens, or Sarah Umbricht. Councilmember Cambada, Sarah Umbricht. Councilmember Thede, Tony Jurgens. Councilmember Olson, Monique Garza. Mayor Bailey, Monique Garza.
So Monique, Monique is taking it, okay.
Mayor, members of the council, according to your instructions, any candidate receiving three or more votes will be considered for appointment. So at this time, Mayor, you would need to cast an additional vote.
Okay. Well, I'll stay with my original, which is Monique Garza. So Monique will get that then. Okay. Again, thank all of you. Kind of stressful, like I said, more than the normal kind of stuff, but it's not an easy thing. But thank you all for coming in and, and sharing your beliefs and thoughts, like I said, about our community, and please do get involved. Go out on our website, fill out the application, pick what your passion is, and let's get you involved in the community in this role. And of course, elections are up next year, and as you heard, this is a one-year term, and then they'll have, in this case, Monique would have to run again in 2024.
And Mayor, before you close the meeting, could you just please make a motion in regards to the appointment of Ms. Garcia? Thank you.
Mayor, I'll move that the appointment of Monique Garza to the vacant position that was previously held by Councilmember Steve Dennis take effect as of the vote at our next meeting.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. And then I'll need a motion to adjourn on this particular one.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thede, second by Councilmember Cambada. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We're adjourned into our regular meeting at 7 o'clock. I always do that with names, especially with you. You can harass Gail with that one, too. And for his years of service, as he is about to do some, do retirement, and while our Director of Public Safety, Pete Kerner, goes up to the podium to speak, I would ask council to join me down in front.
Kent, you can join in now as well.
Oh, you would?
Yes. It's his show.
Where would you like?
Right here, right, right there by the mirror.
All right. I was told I only had 10 minutes, so I'm going to start my timer. I have a lot of stories to share about Kent, but no, in all seriousness, it's not going to be a roast tonight at Kent. We'll do that at some other time, but. We just wanted to take a moment to recognize Kent Griffith, retiring from Regions. I have just a few things from his bio, and I know I'm going to miss a lot of those things, but Kent has been instrumental here, starting back in 1989 with Regions Hospital. I had red hair. Chief Reddine has had quite the flow back then, too, but we've all aged gracefully. But a lot of these successes we've had with our EMS program, Kent, you've been a major factor in that. So I just wanted to read just a few things. And even the more I thought about it, I forgot about all your years on public service commission and things like that, too, so. Murphy's Law. Yep, yep, so. But Kent, he is a Cottage Grove resident with over 34 years of service to the Cottage Grove community. Kent is a registered nurse and national registered paramedic, served as the EMS clinical supervisor for Regions Hospital, and as you're aware, they provide the medical direction for the city of Cottage Grove. Kent has served as a clinical supervisor for Cottage Grove and many other communities under Regions Hospital since 1989. In his role, Kent has been essential to training, development, and improving EMS care provided by Cottage Grove paramedics and EMTs. In addition to his role at Regions Hospital, Kent has also served, he worked as a part-time paramedic with us, also with the fire department, and really, in the last couple of years, really supported us in our COVID-19 response. And he worked a lot with our fire department, with the vaccine team. So I could go on and on about everything you've done, Kent. You've watched the transition from the police medic program, work, you know, as a transition, but tons of good things, but it's a public meeting, so I'm going to leave it at that. And I know you're a man that doesn't expect a lot of recognition, but you really deserve it as a resident here. And I think probably in January, after you decompress, we'll probably get you on the Cottage Grove Lions Strawberry Fest Committee and many other things that we'll have you volunteer, but.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yep, so congratulations, Kent. We have a plaque, and I'd like the mayor to read that.
Yeah, so I'll read the plaque, and then I have a little comment to make, too, about you. Yeah, and I'll be good. I'll be okay. All right, so this plaque is in recognition to Kent, and it says on the plaque, I'll just read it, it says EMS clinical supervisor, Regions Hospital EMS, and it just says, "In recognition of over 34 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Cottage Grove and partnerships between Region EMS and the Cottage Grove Public Safety, your commitment to Cottage Grove EMS is greatly valued and appreciated." The one thing I do want to just mention, and this might be kind of some of the firefighters in here, maybe the public safety group might laugh, but I tend to go to fire sometimes, just if I know what's happening or whatever. And what was interesting, when I've seen that, there's been times where I've seen you there in the Regions, Regions car.
All right. Good evening. This is the November 15, 2023 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I'm calling to order. Our first order of business this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. Sophie, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Cambada?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. All right. Next on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so. We did have a sign up sheet out in the entry, but no one did sign up. So in the event that somebody missed, is there anybody that wants to speak on open forum this evening? As I see all our firefighters and paramedics in the front here. All right. We'll say no then. All right. So we'll move next to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Moved. Second.
All right. We have a motion by councilmember Olson, second by councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. This evening, we have two presentations. The first one is specific recognition to Kent Griffin, Griffith, excuse me. I always do that with names, especially with you. You can harass Gail with that one, too. And for his years of service, as he is about to do some, do retirement. And while our Director of Public Safety Pete Kerner goes up to the podium to speak, I would ask council to join me down in front. Kent, you can join in now as well.
Oh, you would?
Yes. It's his show.
Where would you like?
Right here, right, right there by the mirror.
All right. I was told I only had 10 minutes, so I'm going to start my timer. I have a lot of stories to share about Kent, but no, in all seriousness, it's not going to be a roast tonight at Kent. We'll do that at some other time, but we just wanted to take a moment to recognize Kent Griffith retiring from Regions. I have just a few things from his bio, and I know I'm going to miss a lot of those things, but Kent has been instrumental here, starting back in 1989 with Regions Hospital. I had red hair. Chief Redini has had quite the flow back then, too, but we've all aged gracefully. But every, a lot of these successes we've had with our EMS program, Kent, you've been a major factor in that. So I just wanted to read just a few things. And I even, the more I thought about it, I forgot about all your years on public service commission and things like that, too. So Murphy's Law.
Firefighters in the house.
Yep, yep. So, but Kent, he is a Cottage Grove resident with over 34 years of service to the Cottage Grove community. Kent is a registered nurse and national registered paramedic, served as the EMS clinical supervisor for Regions Hospital. And as you're aware, they provide the medical direction for the city of Cottage Grove. Kent has served as a clinical supervisor for Cottage Grove and many other communities under Regions Hospital since 1989. In his role, Kent has been essential to training, development, and improving EMS care provided by Cottage Grove paramedics and EMTs. In addition to his role at Regions Hospital, Kent has also served, he worked as a part-time paramedic with us, also with the fire department. And really, in the last couple of years, really supported us in our COVID-19 response. And he worked a lot with our fire department, with the vaccine team. So I could go on and on about everything you've done, Kent. You've watched the transition from the police medic program, where, you know, as a transition, but tons of good things, but it's a public meeting, so I'm going to, I'm going to leave it at that. And I know you're a man that doesn't expect a lot of recognition, but you really deserve it as a resident here. And I think probably in January, after you decompress, we'll probably get you on the Cottage Grove Lions Strawberry Fest Committee and many other things that will have you volunteer. But congratulations, Kent. We have a plaque, and I'd like the mayor to read that.
Yeah, so I'll read the plaque, and then I have a little comment to make, too, about you. Yeah. And I'll be good. I'll be okay. All right. So this plaque is in recognition to Kent. And it says on the plaque, I'll just read it, says EMS Clinical Supervisor, Regions Hospital EMS. And it just says, "In recognition of over 34 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Cottage Grove and partnerships between Region EMS and the Cottage Grove Public Safety, your commitment to Cottage Grove EMS is greatly valued and appreciated." The one thing I do want to just mention, and this might be kind of some of the firefighters in here, maybe the public safety group might laugh, but I tend to go to fire sometimes, just if I know what's happening or whatever. And what was interesting, when I've seen that, there's been times where I've seen you there in the Regions, Regions car.
Regions will be.
Yes, yes. And so it isn't that you had to do that. You did it. Because this is your community. You have a love for the community, and we appreciate that. Because it, and the one I do remember seeing, you were instrumental in helping take care of people that were coming out of a burning home with smoke inhalation and such. So I just want to say, it's people like yourself that give themselves to this community that make me proud to be the mayor here. So I wanted to share that with you. So on behalf of myself and the rest of the council, all the members out there, as they're all getting swooshed away to an event, it looks like, and the citizens of Cottage Grove, thank you for your many years of service to our community. And it sounds like we might have some things for him to do after he retires for a month. I didn't think he would. I didn't think he would. So let's, let's give him the plaque first, and let's give him a round of applause, please. Yes. Want to say something?
Oh, sure, I can say something. Thank you very much for the wonderful award. I don't feel like I deserve this at all, but I do thank you. It's been a pleasure working with Cottage Grove for many years from the police EMS. If, without that, I probably would not have met my wife. So that was really a good thing. But it's a great department to work for, very dedicated people, very talented people. And it's been my pleasure working over the years with everyone, including the mayor and council here. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Pete, you want to come up here? Yeah, let's, let's get everybody up here. Come on up, guys. Seriously. We're all in this together. Thank you, council, for, for going down there and supporting him. The next item under presentations, we do this literally every council meeting right before Thanksgiving because of an important day, which is Small Business Saturday, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And it's hard to believe we're almost there already. And so I have asked councilmember Olson to please read the proclamation for the city of Cottage Grove in order to focus on our business community and please shop local. And then I'll need a motion in a second to approve. So councilmember Olson, why don't you read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor. The proclamation for Small Business Saturday, which is November 25, 2023, reads as follows. Whereas the government of the city of Cottage Grove celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are over 33 million small businesses in the United States, which combined account for 99% of United States businesses. Whereas small businesses employ 47% of the employees in the private sector in our country and contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue. And whereas consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And whereas the city of Cottage Grove supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving, November 25 this year, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota, to hereby proclaim November 25, 2023, as Small Business Saturday in the city, and urge our residents to go out and support their favorite small businesses. Past this, the 15th day of November, 2023, and signed by Myron Bailey, Mayor. And Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve this proclamation.
Fantastic. Thank you, councilmember Olson, and thank you for reading it. So we've got a motion by councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
I'll go ahead and second that.
All right. Second by councilmember, councilmember Cambada. Again, we do hear a lot, I know up at this council table, about the importance of small businesses and local businesses. So I encourage everybody, where possible, please continue to shop local. And I prefer the small businesses, obviously. And, you know, whether it's the Boondocks or other places, Boondocks boutiques and things like that. Or if it is a national business, per se, I'd still have it, still do it in Cottage Grove. It makes a difference. So, all right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is consent. Is there anything council want to pull on consent this evening? All right. Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve consent.
Move consent.
All right. So we have a motion by councilmember Thede. Do I have a second? A second? All right. Second by councilmember Cambada. Any further discussion? Councilmember Olson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bailey. Generally speaking, when we make comment on consent items, those comments are reserved for when we pull an item. And I'm, I'm not doing that this evening. But I do want to say that on our consent agenda tonight, we have some important things. And one of the things that I would like the public at home to know is that as a city council, one of the things we pride ourselves on here in Cottage Grove is that we work together collaboratively toward positive outcomes. And that doesn't just mean collaboratively with each other. It also means collaboratively with our staff, with the residents of the communities, with our various advisory commissions and other stakeholders, to ensure that whatever the decision gets made, it's the right decision for the city of Cottage Grove as a whole. That doesn't mean we don't disagree. We do. Sometimes we disagree behind closed doors and have the conversation about our disagreements. But one thing that has always stood true in my time as a city council member, and I think it's a really important thing to acknowledge, is that the council acts as a body. We are one group of individuals, and we have individual opinions and thoughts that we share when we deal with any sort of issue that comes before us. But when the body makes a decision, that decision is the move forward decision. And whether we agree or disagree as individuals, the one thing that I think is really neat about this city council and this community is that we all make sure that we support the decision of the body. And I think that that is a precedent that we've set in our time together. I know since the mayor and I started in 2008, that's something that's been very important to us. And it is a tradition that I believe strongly in and plan to continue. And that's really all I needed to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. No other comments? All in favor of the consent agenda? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. So if you were here for anything on tonight's consent agenda, all of those items have been approved. All right. Next is eight. It's approved disbursements in order to pay the bills.
Move the bills.
We have a motion by councilmember Olson. Do I have a second? Second by councilmember Thede. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Nine is public hearings. We do have one this evening. It's one that we've visited in the past, but this is an extension. So it is the Gerlock Property Drainage and Utility Easement Vacation. And our community development director, Emily Schmitz, is going to walk us through this one.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, council. This is something that had been before you in the past, actually, all the way back in 2012. Just a small bit of background, so you're familiarized. And I'm trying to find my pen here. This storm pipe that you can see extends over the Gerlock property over in Old Cottage Grove, in between Langley and Lamar Avenue. Anyhow, that infrastructure was installed to kind of work through some drainage situations on Langley Avenue. And for most of you, council that know, but for the public, when we do have infrastructure in the ground, we do have an easement over that so that we are able to maintain that infrastructure long term. What happened, or what staff came across, and again, this is more of a housekeeping item, but that easement that was supposed to be over that pipe, as you can see in red on the screen, was recorded against the wrong PID or the wrong parcel number. So we are here this evening to vacate that easement as it does not cover the pipe. And we'd like to shift it and record it over the appropriate pipe, as you can see the yellow just to the north of that red line. So two actions this evening, hold the public hearing to vacate that easement. And then we'll, of course, record that actual easement over the correct pipe. And I'll rephrase, the two actions are hold the public hearing and then a resolution.
There you go. Counsel, any questions before I open? All right. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll wait for councilmember wants to do number two.
I'll go ahead and move that we hold a public hearing to vacate.
We did that. Do two.
Oh, we did that. I'm sorry. Okay. Move that we adopt Resolution 2023 143 vacating the public drainage and utility easement across Gerlock Services Incorporated property and Gerlock property over part of Block B plat of Cottage Grove.
All right. So we have a motion by councilmember Thede. Do I have a second? Go ahead, make this.
I'll second that motion, but I had, I had an inquiry for staff.
Okay. So we do.
Before we make our final vote.
Yep. We have a motion and a second. So now we have further discussion. Go ahead. Councilmember Cambada.
I just wanted clarity from staff that, obviously, Gerlock Services is aware of the, the change, and they're, they don't have any objection either.
Mayor, councilmember Cambada, our staff is working very closely with the Gerlocks and their entire trust, actually, to navigate the process.
Good. Good. Okay. Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda, bid awards or are none. 11 is regular agenda. There is no items this evening on the regular agenda. 12, we're down to council comments requests. I will start with councilmember Cambada.
I'm going to concede my time.
Oh, there we go. All right. So we have nothing for councilmember Cambada. How about councilmember Thede?
You know, I don't really have anything tonight either.
Wow. This is crazy. Do I need to stretch this out? Did you guys do a bet or something? Okay. Councilmember Olson.
Mayor, I am under the assumption, although you have not shared with me that this is the plan, that you're going to go through all of the various upcoming holiday events. Is that an accurate assumption?
I mean, if you want to take some, you're welcome to.
You, you are Mayor Christmas, and I do not want to take that away from you. So if that is your intent, that, that would be the, the direction we should go. So I will cede my time, and you can, and you, and you can share, because there's a lot coming down the pipeline.
There is. And I won't, I'll be honest with you, I won't go through all of them because some of them will have after the next council meeting. But the first thing, before I even get to that, I did want to just let the public know that prior to this council meeting this evening, we did interview prospective candidates to fill the vacant city council seat. That was vacated by councilmember Steve Dennis. And we ended up choosing Monique Garza as our newest member that will be sworn in at our first meeting in December. I do want, as, as we did say this evening, thank all of the different individuals that did throw their name in the hat, so to speak. They're all very passionate about the city of Cottage Grove, the direction we're moving. It was very refreshing and pretty cool to see. So it was a tough decision, but happy with the results of, of Monique. As we talk about the holidays, it's amazing that we're literally about a week away from Thanksgiving already. And so one of the things I did want to mention, specific to Thanksgiving, there is an event on Thanksgiving Day, which is Hail to the Bird. And all the proceeds for that 5K race walk you could do either is down at Hamlet Park, goes on the back trails and on the roads and comes through. That starts at nine o'clock in the morning at Hamlet Park. That's when the race actually kicks off. And again, all the proceeds from the, the money they raise during this event, and there's a good, a lot, there's a lot of people that go down there for this, goes to the Friends in Need Food Shelf. And then I also want to mention that following week, on November 29, once again, here at Cottage Grove City, City Hall, is the Hometown Holiday Celebration. There's going to be a variety of things for families to come and friends. There's going to be Santa Mrs. Claus, there's going to be reindeer, there's going to be rides from the parking areas, there's going to be bonfires, food trucks, fun things for the kids to do, games and such. So I encourage everybody to come out. The area out here will be decorated, too, for Christmas. So we encourage everybody to come celebrate. This is going to be our second annual event. We used to just, I will say, just do a Christmas tree lighting. We've expanded that now to create more of a, a family fun event. So I encourage everybody to join me here and the rest of the council, again, on Wednesday, November 29, from 5 to 7, here at City Hall. And just as a friendly reminder, the weather seems to be very nice right now. Everything is held outside, so dress, dress accordingly. The other item that is coming before our next, before the next council meeting is Fill the Fire Truck, which is also another benefit for the Friends in Need Food Shelf. That is going to be from 10 a.m. to noon at Woodridge Park. They have moved that around to different locations, but Woodridge is the one that they picked this year. And again, the, all the items that you bring, and are looking for like paper products and such, those are the items that are going to be donated, again, to the Friends in Need Food Shelf. Or if you want, you can obviously donate cash, because cash obviously goes a long way, too, if you, if you want, and they would appreciate that. And then I know this is after the last few things I'll just mention. Well, actually, I'll, I'll mention one more, and that is the Holiday Home Lights Tour. I did see it's out on social media. And so if you're interested, and you, either your own home or a neighbor, and you want to recognize them, the city has, if you go to their city's website or the social media post, you can go in and add the addresses in there for the, the location of where somebody has some awesome decorations. And then the city will automatically, the system actually loads a map and will give you the best direction around the city to visit all of the, all of the lights, to, to check it out. We start you here at City Hall, because the idea is, is that we want you to be by the big Santa chair, and there's a Santa mailbox and all that out here. And then you can start going around the city. If more people sign up than maybe what we thought we're going to, and this has happened in the past, we actually create a North Pole and a South Pole when it comes to two separate maps. So it's obviously up to you what you want to do. But I do know it's a fun event. Parents and such like to take their kids out. I've seen it, because my house is one of the houses on the list. But the fact is, it's pretty amazing. And then the last thing, which kind of ties together, and that is the Holiday Train does arrive on December 10, which is a Sunday. And it's basically the festivities, there's additional festivities are going to be happening this year. This is an anniversary celebration for CP, C K, KC? Yeah, they're, they've changed their name. It's not just CP Rail anymore.
They bought KC Southern.
Yes. Yeah. So there's, they, they merged two trains, but it was, used to be CP Rail. And so they are going to be in town. Festivities start at 3 o'clock. The train arrives around 5-ish. Obviously, music. It's a great time. And this, again, is a fundraiser for the Friends in Need Food Shelf. So I just wanted to interject those out there. But if you're interested, check out the city's website or the Facebook page. You'll see a bunch of those, including many other events at River Oaks that are coming up. And I encourage everybody to get out there and enjoy the community and enjoy the holidays for all we have to offer. Councilmember Olson.
Mayor, you did leave one out, so I apologize that I had to.
No, that's fine. I know which one you.
Take my time back. And that is December 3 at the VFW, Big Red Barn here in Cottage Grove. The Cottage Grove Lions will be holding their annual Santa breakfast. That starts at 8:00 in the morning. All the young ones who come have an opportunity to sit on Santa's lap and talk to him face to face about what they may want for Christmas this year. And it is a really, really nice event with great food. We've got eggs and bacon and biscuits and gravy and all the, the fixings that you could ever want. So please join us on December 3, if you can. if you can. Again, 8:00 at the VFW. I believe adults are $12, and you can certainly just pay at the door. But of course, if you're unable to make it on the 3rd, for whatever reason, Santa will be at River Oaks the next weekend.
There you go.
So you'll get an opportunity, one way or the other, to get your last minute gift wishes in to the man in the red suit. And that's really all I had to say, Mayor, was December 3 for the Lions. Thank you.
Or if there's people like me that need to talk to Santa twice, I go to both.
Yeah, I would recommend it.
There you go. All right. So that is it. Under council comments request, just so the public is aware, we do have two workshops this evening. The first workshop is closed to the public, and it is pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D 05 subsection 3B for attorney-client privileged communication to discuss a potential litigation related to DuPont and the 3M Drinking Water Class Action lawsuit. For the council, that will be in the conference room. And then, once we're complete with that, we will be having a workshop that's open to the public, and that will be in the training room for those that are interested. And that is a discussion about the local option sales tax, community relations, education services. And so at this point, we will adjourn from in here, and council will move to the conference room. Okay? Thank you.